All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Stand for the singing of "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot of all, in all our sons common. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on God for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on God for thee. O Canada, we stand on God for thee.
Yes. Oh, yes. We'll do that first. Okay, record of attendance, Lynda, you're good? Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Not yet. Approval of agenda additions or deletions? We're going to add Mrs. Cassidy. And let's do that. Can we do that right after we approve the minutes? Is everyone okay with that? So... Did you have an addition? Anybody else? Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, just one addition, a... A thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, is eleven A? Eleven B? CAO?
Thank you, your worship, I have a report for you on sixty-eight Parade Street. It's a complaint, and it deals with our minimum housing bylaw.
Perfect. So we'll put that as eleven B. Anything else? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes. Committee of the whole, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town council, February twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Moved, seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Martha, would you like to... We'll make sure, yes, we'll make sure that the microphone's working for you, welcome. And you can just tell us who you are, and... And I will put the camera on you. Almost, definitely. Fix that. We've got most of you, Martha.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Martha Cassidy, and I'm here this evening representing the St. Andrews Society of Southwestern Nova Scotia. And, I'll carry on. The International Gathering of the Clans events are held around the world and are intended to celebrate the influence of Scots who settled in virtually every country in the world. And to serve as a way for Scots who are related to each other, however distantly, to connect or reconnect through their clan identity. Every three to four years, events associated with the International Gathering are held in Nova Scotia. And as you know, our province's name is the Latin translation for New Scotland. And the name Nova Scotia has been ours since September the tenth of sixteen twenty-five. When the International Gathering is happening in Nova Scotia, it traditionally focuses on Pugwash and Aniganish and Picta Counties, with some special events in Halifax at the Tattoo, and of course Cape Breton. This year, for the first time ever, the official closing exercises for the two thousand and fifteen International Gathering of the Clans are being held in Yarmouth on Saturday, July twenty-fifth, and Sunday, July twenty-sixth. With place names such as New Edinburgh or Argyle, Yarmouth County obviously had a Scottish influence. But knowledge of that influence has been overlooked, as we have recognized other nations' roles in our collective history. But we do have a Scottish story to learn and tell. And most, the most instantly recognizable symbol of that story, besides a kilt, is the tartan pattern used for kilts and other items of clothing. In Canada, through the efforts of Ms. Jean McCaragher-Watson of Halifax, Tartan Day is celebrated on the first Monday of April. Tartan Day two thousand and fifteen will be Monday, April the sixth, which of course is Easter Monday. Nova Scotia has a tartan, we all know that, but so also does Yarmouth. Designed by the late Saul Gillis, a longtime resident of Yarmouth, the Yarmouth tartan is ours. And so I'm here this evening to present each of you with a sample of the Yarmouth tartan, and would ask that you and your staffs wear it on April the sixth, or any other time it seems appropriate. It would also be appropriate to wear it on July twenty-fifth at the closing and the calee that evening. On Sunday, July twenty-sixth, there will be a turken, there is no G, in, at Beacon United Church, at the eleven o'clock service. This is a ceremony during which a blessing is said for the families represented by the tartans displayed at the turken, turken. You would certainly be welcome at the turken, and clearly, your sample of the Yarmouth tartan would identify you as part of the Yarmouth Clan. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you very much, and I would... Just to digress a little bit, there, the Federation for the Promotion of Scottish Culture in Nova Scotia concentrates its efforts primarily on promoting and maintaining the language, the dance, the music, the food, associated with Scottish culture. But I find that I personally am drawn to the things that people of Scottish descent have done to make our world and the whole world better. The easiest one is Alexander Graham Bell. And the telephone, but, but before that, you have to understand that, that Alexander Graham Bell's mother was hearing disabled. The family worked in the field of learning to communicate with people who were deaf. That's, that was the main motivation, and when Bell married a woman who was deaf, that became even farther more important. But when you look at something like a press conference with the President of the United States, and down here, there is someone signing what is asked, what is replied, and they're, they're talking concepts like peace and cooperation and aggression and concepts, and you realize that it's gone from helping someone to learn how to say, "I would like more to eat", to concepts, and, and little steps all along the line, but they made a difference. Bell also designed and developed the hydrofoil, and our only Canadian... Odrad, I've forgotten the name, the boat that has planes on it. Pardon? No, has planes on it. Thank you, the only, the only Canadian aircraft carrier, the Bonaventure, had, had a propellant system that also came from Bell, so he's changed our whole world. But if we travel from here to Ontario, we change time zones, and that's thanks to Sir Sanford Fleming. So, I'm much more interested in, personally, in, in the effects of the people who came from Scotland, settled over the whole world, and made a whole lot of changes. Some of them little, some of them incremental. That's, well, I was, I was hoping you would mention that, yes. Again, I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Martha.
And you all have these. Pardon? I doesn't, I plan on wearing it a whole lot of times. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
No, I married me a Scot, though.
Good for you. And look at the changes made in our world.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, thank you, Martha. Okay, business arising. Counselor, don't make me come over across the table. Second reading helmet bylaw repeal. So, at this point, if anyone in the audience would like to speak to the helmet bylaw repeal, we can do that now? Sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
Your worship, if you or the CEO could just point out why we're doing this, I had a couple of queries about it, and I explained to them, so maybe the public out there that doesn't know why we're taking a helmet bylaw off, rather than leave it on for safety reason, perhaps, you or the CEO can just explain it to the public that are listening there? Thank you.
CBC actually called me and asked why we were doing this, and my understanding is that it's a provincial, the province takes care of this. So this bylaw is redundant, there's no need to have it on our books. The town bylaw's redundant, so it's already covered by the province, and so therefore, we just want to remove it from our books. Anything you want, go ahead.
Yep, no, I would only offer, in addition to that, it's, there's a practical reason as well, and that is, in the entire time that we've had the bylaw, I'm not sure that we've actually written a single ticket, I'm not sure that it's ever been enforced, or if it, in fact, is enforceable. You know, sometimes with bylaws like this, even if we came upon a situation, even if we issued a ticket, if it was challenged in, in the courts, which would tie up court time, typically, the penalty is, is miniscule. So, we're probably better off not to have a bylaw that we can't enforce, than to have, than to have a bylaw on the books that gives people a false impression.
Good. Second call, anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Third and final. Hearing no one, I'm looking for a motion to approve second reading. Moved, seconded. Any further discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Peace and Order bylaw, first reading. CAO?
Your worship, we discussed this at Committee of the Whole two weeks ago, and so this amendment to the Peace and Order bylaw would allow for the live trapping of raccoons within the, within the town of Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded, Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, I have a, just a quick question, it has to do under, under general, anyone interested in removing a raccoon can arrange with a hunter to set a live trap and have a raccoon removed? What's the definition of a hunter? I'm, my, my first thought is a licensed hunter with this, with his firearm card in his pocket. Do we, do we need a specialized person in order to set up a live trap?
You know what, I don't know, I don't know if you need a, any kind of licensing from Natural Resources to, to set a trap, or to capture a wild raccoon. If you did, then, then that is a, that's beyond our scope. The term hunter here was not meant to exclude anyone, from, from my point of view, and I wrote that. If you are in the act of trapping a raccoon, in my books, you're a hunter.
You're a hunter, okay, fine, okay, thank you.
Perhaps I can just give a little bit of clarity to that. I have a brother-in-law that does trapping, there's a trapping license that you have to require. So, it's not a hunter that goes, that hunts it with a gun, or whatever. It's a licensed trapper, and he's permitted to trap with different methods, cage, whatever. Depends on what the animal is.
Good, thank you. So, it was moved and seconded, the first reading, is there any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Minimum Housing Bylaw Amendments, second reading. CAO?
Your worship, this one dates back a while, this had to do with exiting requirements within the Minimum Housing Standards bylaw, which were in excess of what are required under the National Building Code, and so it was recommended by our building inspector to bring the two in, in line, and so that's what the amendments are concerned.
Good.
Thank you, your worship, your worship, we, we've known about this for some time, it's been on, you've put it on the, on the internet. We've got it, we've read it, it's been there, I'm comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with the, with the report that was given, so I'm, I'm in favor of it, so if you need a motion, I so moved that we accept it.
So, this is where we hear from the public, Counselor Dawes, you go ahead?
No, that's fine, I will, I'll, I'll wait till the public.
Anyone in the public wish to speak to this?
Not a lot of public out there.
I know.
Not a lot of public out there, but you've got to give them the, give them the option.
Third and final? Okay, hearing no one, Counselor Dawes, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, I, I'm in agreement with ninety-nine point nine percent of this, I still, I still am not, not in agreement with the, the one, the single egress portion of this. I still see it as a... It's a question of, of safety. If for some reason, if for some reason, that single egress is blocked, and even if you are on the ground floor, in an emergency, many people don't think too, all that, that, too straight. You jump out, jump out of your window, that's fine if you land, land straight on your feet. If you however, are holding an infant or a baby, in any emergency, you don't always think straight. Also, if someone is physically impaired, it's not that easy for them to jump out of their wheelchair and jump out of a, out of a one-story window. I also, otherwise, I'm, I'm in complete, I'm in complete favor of this. There is one point, and I am very, very sorry, but I have left my notes in, in camera. Would you mind? Thank you very much, Lynda. There's something that I would like to bring to everyone's attention, if this could possibly be considered to be added to this, and if someone else would like, oh, thank you, someone else would like to speak to this in the meantime?
Anyone else want to speak to this while we're, we'll wait?
I'll ask a quick question. Are, in this stage of the game of this report, are we permitted to add and delete what we want to add and delete, or does it have to go back to where the original person that wrote this report? I mean, this was, we adopted it, I thought, the first time, and if, if that's the case, then it doesn't seem, go ahead, I'll let you respond.
Excuse me, so at second reading, any amendment could be, could be proposed tonight, and it would, would require you to go back and do another second reading, if it was significant, Greg, am I correct in saying that?
Okay. Yeah, that, sorry, that's right, you know, a minor amendment might be permissible and still perceive the second reading, but if, I don't know what it is, but if it's anything, you know, substantial to affect the wording of the bylaw, if it's a new provision, then you would have to go back and...
Would that mean that it would have to be re-advertized and all the other stuff, and go through the whole gauntlet and the whole, the whole nine yards?
That's right.
Okay.
And if I can just add, I think that the Counselor was asking about, I guess you wanted the, you liked the provision because it was perhaps more restrictive than the National Building Code about egress?
Yes, yes, because I have, yeah, go ahead.
And I was just gonna say, there's a provision of the building, Jeff had asked me that, and there's a provision of the Building Code Act which basically supersedes any municipal bylaw, so that, essentially saying the town is not permitted to have a bylaw that creates a higher requirement than the National Building Code.
Than the national, yes, yes. The national single egress.
Yeah, and I think that's why we're changing it, because it doesn't, it's a higher standard than the National Building Code.
I'm not asking that, I'm not asking that to be ta, to be changed, I am only expressing, I'm only expressing my feeling about this, I am in agreement with everything except that I still have my reservations. I understand fully about the National Building Code, because ever since this was first brought up, I have spoken with just about any and every builder and developer that I've seen, I've walked up and I've asked their, their personal opinion on it, and they have unanimously all agreed that they are, they're fine with it, because it saves them, that extra door saves them anywhere from two hundred to five thousand dollars, depending on how elaborate a door they're going to be saving on, putting in, putting in the house or in the apartment. They however, have all told me that they caution and they suggest to their customers to go with a second, with a second egress, because they're very concerned about their reputation and their future in, in the building business. Now, there is one thing however, and that's just my opinion, that's the only reason I brought it up. There is one thing though, that I would ask be considered to be added, and that is something that I learnt recently at a Sustainable Communities Conference that I, that I just attended. And that is how important a sanitary, I'm sorry, a backflow valve is. And that is being added in many, many municipalities into their, into their building codes. If you'd like to know more about it, I would gladly share, but that is one thing that I would ask everyone to, would ask you to consider to add to this. Thank you.
Counselor Landel?
Thank you, your worship, I'm very comfortable with it. We have a situation in Yarmouth, or many situations in Yarmouth, where low-income families, living together, relatives, brothers, sisters, often in the same house, have small mini-units that are in a basement. I've visited some of these, I've been in some, and there are exits, I mean, the reality is, to actually expect a low-income or a senior who's in a property who basically is just trying to accommodate family, to literally dig a hole in the yard and chip through the wall, chip through the, the concrete of the basement to put an exit in, I think is unrealistic, I mean, it's a big burden. I'm very comfortable with the National Building Code, they have come in place. We haven't had anything to the contrary on that. Regarding the back valve, that came up at the conference I was at last week as well, but it's more of an insurance thing, and that's something that staff I think would probably look at and advises on, I don't know how this would fit within this document. I think we're at a second reading stage, as I love to say, pitter-patter, let's get at her, let's get this thing moving. There are some homes in this community that do not pass this standard, and we need some enforcement power, so I would highly stressfully continue with it.
CAO?
Yeah, just on the backflow valve, I've discussed that with the engineer over the last couple of years, as a result of some of the sewer backup issues, and a lot of that heartache can be alleviated through use of backflow valves. We would probably, I would probably suggest, and I'll consult with the engineer, that we deal with that under the Sewer Connections bylaw, because this bylaw just deals with residential properties, where that bylaw deals with all sewer connections. But it, it's a, it's a good idea to do that, to require that.
Did you get, did you hear that part?
Not quite, but I got, I got the gist of it.
The Sewer Connections bylaw?
There's another bylaw that can take care of that.
That would encompass commercial properties as well as residential properties, and we could, we could do something under that bylaw.
So we're going to go on this one?
All right.
Unless anybody needs to.
The, the only reason I brought it up is, at the conference that, that I attended, one session was about the National Provincial Residential Building Codes are being urged to be reviewed and updated to reflect the evolving impact of extreme weather, and the backflow or the backwater valve, valves are, are being looked at as being included in the building codes. That's all, otherwise, I'm fine with it.
Good, all right, so, I'm looking, did you need to add something?
Just got, just, just to let, when I built my house fourteen years ago, it was common to put these in. All plumbers that are building new homes and redoing basements or anything for anybody, recommend to put those in, it's not something new, it's, but it would, it would, it wouldn't hurt to put it in our, our bylaw. I thought it was already in there, because when I, like I said, when I built mine, they, he recommended the plumber to put that in, so, it's great.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the second reading. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Nova Scotia Association of Police Governance. Counselor Landel?
Thank you, thank you, your worship, the Nova Scotia Police, Nova Scotia Association of Police Governance is a new organization that is being made up of all of the municipal police forces across Nova Scotia. Up until now, we have some municipal forces, we have some regional forces, and we have our CMP. Through UNSM and through different groups, it was felt advisable to get all of these groups together at least two or three times a year, because we have some commonality and some issues. So I'm making a motion that the town of Yarmouth join the Nova Scotia Association of Police Governance, and cost about two hundred dollars a year for a membership.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Moved? Youth engagement via committees. So, so there's three here on youth engagement, basically, and the first one, the first one is that staff be directed to amend the citizen advisory appointment policy to stipulate one voting seat be given to a youth, a town of Yarmouth voting citizen under the age of twenty-nine. The, the other part that I put was, we could also opt to add one voting seat to be given to a youth. And my, my thinking is that, first of all, it sounds cliché, but it's true, the youth are our future, they're our future leaders, and we need to engage them, because I think it's, it's something that we have to do intentionally, I don't think they're just going to always step up, so I think we need to make that effort. There's some, some great people out there with great ideas, and I think if we just put it out there, then, then we'll tap into a really valuable resource. Personally, I like the one that says, "Let's add the extra seat, because we can't guarantee that a youth is going to be interested in any or all of our committees, and, and we don't want to, we don't want to have a seat empty or downsize the committee, but adding that extra seat might be the way to go." So I can't make the motion from the floor, but if somebody wants to make that motion, one or the other? Counselor Landel, you're on.
Thank you, your worship, I looked at this, and, and I commend you for it. I have a couple of issues to the solicitor, can we do it? Because it seems to me you're doing a discrimination here, where you're simply going to be putting one seat for a particular age class in your population. From my experience, we have never turned anyone down, especially youth, for any committees, anybody can apply to a committee in the town of Yarmouth. Personally, I, I have a problem taking, losing a committee member for a youth member who may or may not be able to attend. The reality is, we don't have a large stock of youth in the town of Yarmouth. Yarmouth Consolidated Memorial High School has approximately four hundred and fifty students from the Yarmouth town attending it. Community College, and made some calls, has about a hundred and fifty, so we have six hundred roughly young people in that, in the young age group under twenty, then you have the working group, which is up to twenty-nine. The problem that young people have, your worship, and I work with young people every day, I've done that for forty years, the difficulty is, they just don't have the time. That's the whole problem. They have to work, they have young families they're trying to raise, many of them have two or three jobs, and they just don't have the time to come to a meeting. They would like to, and later in life they probably would. But the reality is a time commitment for them, and I feel for them, we've tried over the years to try to encourage young people... to try to encourage young people, and almost the way to go at it is to, in my opinion, is to go to a town hall meeting literally and, and, and they, in the schools and talk to them there and to get their ideas. I do like your option too, which is the Youth Advisory Committee. That is, that is a very good idea. But I, I welcome, I know in any of the committees that I'm involved, and we would welcome them on there, to add a seat designated for youth, I think, I think maybe empty a lot. I cannot see a lot of young people screaming into the Heritage Committee. I've heard enough problem getting Heritage members. I don't think they, probably, they may not be overly excited with some of the committees we do, but others I think they would be. Recreation is one, I think is a critical one they may want to look at. I do like the Youth Advisory Committee, and we've brought this up in the past, doing a little internet search on it, it's quite common to have those in communities and where they serve as an advisory capacity meeting. Some communities I notice are doing it once a month, some are doing it once every two or three months. It would be good if we had such a body. But again, to get, to get them, to get them engaged is the real huge issue. And it's something we desperately need, because I'll be honest, a lot of our committees, as we all know, we said, are, are the gray-haired set like me who are there, and the reason they're there is they have the time now to spend in it. So, I don't know what the solution is, but I would definitely support you with the Youth Advisory Committee. On this other committee structure, I, I'm, I think if the message was given that, hey, guys, you're more than welcome to come, I, I would love to have young people show up in any of my committees, and I can simply speak for other councillors who are on other committees. We would welcome them with, with open arms. All our meetings are open, and they can have as much input as they want. But, but my worry is, is that we would have an empty seat, and that's the difficulty. The other problem is, is we have a transient youth population. The ones that are in the high school are going to be there for two or three years. Well, by the time they hit voting age, they're in grade eleven, then they're in grade twelve, and then they're off to university. So, once you get into that university cycle and training cycle, they're gone. And then unfortunately, as we all know, a lot of our children leave the area. We, we aren't lucky enough to keep our children in the area. So, I, I, you know, I, I love the idea, I just don't know how it's practical, but I think the Youth Advisory Committee, your worship, I would really encourage it. And I'd like to go one step further, if I may, with Youth Advisory Committee. Make it a countywide committee.
Well, that would, you have to engage your, I've already spoken with the, the municipality.
Yeah. Make, make it a county one, because here's our problem. I'll give you, just not to go on a rant, but I do want to share this with you. We have a Technology Advisory Committee, but all of the young people who are into technology live out of town. They would love to be involved with the Technology Advisory Committee, as you know, your worship, but we only have one or two that actually live in town. Everybody else is outside of town. They would, and they were critical to it before. So, if we could somehow have some of these as joint committees with the municipal partners, I think it would be ideal, because you're not just looking at the town, you're looking at the whole county. So, I think we should have like a, a joint Youth Advisory Committee that has Argyle maybe, or even just Modi and us, who cares? But the more, the merrier that we can get involved.
Thank you. So, so I'm just going to respond to that, to that piece, because I think, I think the problem is exactly some of the points that were made. So, it's not up to us to decide whether the youth have the time. I, I think it's up to them to decide whether they have the time, whether they have an hour a week, two hours, or ten hours. So, we can't sit here and say, let's not do it because they may not have the time. It's also not up to us to sit here and decide whether the youth are interested in our various committees, including Heritage. So, I, see, I would be insulted if I were youth and I were interested in something like that and, and we're sitting here saying, well, they may not be interested. I think pointing out the Recreation Committee for youth is, it cuts them short, it's cutting them short. We're not after the youth to sit on a Recreation Committee, we're after the youth to sit on, on Heritage and, and planning and, and all these big-ticket items because they're our future. But we're also not talking about fourteen and sixteen-year-olds. We're talking about voting, voting-age people up to the age of twenty-nine that have a vested interest in this community, and they're leaving, I think, part and parcel because they're not engaged enough. And transient, to me, simply means that, you know, the dynamic changes, so that everybody is not, it's not always the same person sitting on the committee. So, that's, and, and I firmly believe that when it comes to youth, and I, I know it's hard to call somebody that's twenty-eight or twenty-nine a youth, but when it comes to the youth, we have to be intentional about it, and, and help them understand that, you know what, maybe you only need to put in an hour, or some of our committees are only an hour or two hours per month, and give them that opportunity. I completely agree with you that we shouldn't have that seat empty, which is why I thought, you know what, if we do the second option and just say, that seat is there, and, and if we can fill it, great. Otherwise, if, if nobody makes the motion, and then that's fine, if no one's interested, I, I think it would be a sad state for us, but if no one's interested, then the very least, we'll go out to the schools and out to the community and just, just say, you know what, we, we need you to be a part of this. And we really do, because, and, and I don't want to tell any tales at the table, but I'm fifty-four, I think I'm the youngest one sitting here.
You are.
Right? Fifty-four. We need some young whippersnappers sitting at the table. They've got, just got so much to add, and they've just, they've been out in the world, some of them are coming back, and when they come back, we want to have a, a place at our table for them. So, that's just my, my little thoughts. Counselor Doss?
Thank you, your worship. It's curious that you brought this up, because at the conference, the Sustainable Communities Conference that I attended, that was one of the, one of the, one of the key items that was discussed over and over again. It is a, a growing interest of all municipalities to make a seat available for and to engage the youth. Some municipalities have been sat down, some councils, and they reworded, they changed the wording in, in their bylaws, of their advisory committee bylaws. So, I'm, I'm, I'm completely in favor, and I would make the motion on your second, on your second suggestion here, to opt to add one voting seat. Do you want me to read the whole thing, Linda? No? Alright.
Now, can we do this?
Can we do this?
If there's a seconder?
Yeah, you can amend the policy to have, you know, I guess a seat reserved for certain criteria such as age, that would be allowed.
Okay.
Alright. Good, I would make that motion if I'll have a seconder.
I'll second.
Second it. Thank you, Counselor Mackayzick.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I, I, I looked at this, and I don't have a problem with, with the youth sitting on this, but I, I have a problem like Counselor Landell that it's a designated seat. I don't think there's really any need for it. You might think, and the other councillors might think, after going through a conference and that and hearing that. That's great, but I, no, you, no you didn't, no. Ninja, the mayor from Calgary's giving this speech tonight.
Oh, probably he is.
No, he is. He's giving this speech tonight on a lot of these topics that you've got here. But anyway, nevertheless, I think that we perhaps do a poor job in advertising for youth that come sit on our committees or our boards. We advertise for people over twenty, no, we don't even advertise for people over twenty-nine. We just advertise for people. Perhaps if we, when we put in the ad, that we're looking for, for youth from, from a voting age up to whatever, and maybe it's just to get them engaged, add a little something to that ad, that would spare them up to, to come up and, and join some of these committees. Maybe that's all we need to do. But giving them a seat, okay, so now we give them a seat. Who else comes and asks for a seat? I know that we have different seats on, the provincial government puts different seats for different, different people on, on boards, different cultures. We're going to the youth? Do we go to now to the seniors of all seniors? I mean, do we, I mean, are, are we setting some sort of a precedence here by making special seats for, for special people? I, I don't know, I'm just asking the question. I, I really don't think there's a need for it, myself personally. I think, I think we just got to do a better job in getting the word out that there's a room for, for, for scene, for, for, for the youth, for the middle class, for the seniors, whoever, for the town people of Yarmouth, to come and sit on some of these boards. Maybe we're not putting the right ad in the paper. Maybe we're, you know, maybe it's on how you brand it, or how you word it. I guess, you know, maybe, maybe we ought to do that, so, that's just my thought on it.
Thank you. Counselor Landell?
I wasn't going to respond, but I think I, I have to, because I think the perception, your worship, you're painting is that I'm anti-youth on committees, and I'm, I'm not anti-youth.
No, that's not at all.
That's the way it came across, your worship. I'm sorry, but it did. You can, you can have your interpretation, I can have mine. But I'm definitely not anti-youth on committees. I just want that record to be clear. My view is, is that, and I'm like, I, I mean, I've got no problem, it's a motherhood issue. I, I want to know from the CIO, first of all, what committees are we talking? Like, are we talking just the citizen advisory committees? Or are we talking all committees? Because some committees are limited by numbers. Does that mean that hypothetically, that one of the members will have to step off the police advisory board to make room for a youth seat, because that's regulated by, by the province of Nova Scotia? I'm looking at, for example, are we talking boards such as the Meadows or Argyle Home Support, which some youth would find very interesting. But again, we are limited by the number of seats that were given by agreement with our partners. Is tho, are those the agencies that you're talking? I, I disagree with you with the comments with Recreation. My comment, I use Recreation, your worship, as an option. I did not choose to insult youths by saying that they're only suitable to talk about Recreation, far from it. Youth in this town are, as far as I'm concerned, got every right to talk about anything that they wish to talk in a democratic institution, they're fair to do that. So, I think that comment, your worship, I, I just want to clarify, because that was not my intent. I use it as an example. I think if you recall, your worship, my comment, I would welcome somebody to come to the Heritage Advisory Committee. I would welcome somebody to come to Communities of Loom. I would welcome to come to any committee meeting. But my worry is, is that some of our committees are very limited in size, and I would hate to, and we're, we're, we're basically controlled by the way the committee is made up to have so many members. I just would hate to lose a committee member that would have to step down, or would not be renewed for their position, for a seat that's going to be empty, because a, a young person may not find that committee interesting. That was my only observation. I mean, I'll support the motion, but I would hate to see us lose valuable volunteers that are on committees now for an empty seat. If, if we had a number of young people who wanted to sit, they can apply now. I mean, I, I see no reason why any young person, and again, under the age of twenty-nine, or thirty-five, or eighteen, or nineteen, I couldn't care less what the age is, if they want to apply, they have every right to apply now. They can put their names in right now, but I've got a sneaky feeling, there's not a lot of them. I agree with Counselor Mackayzick, we're not promoting these, these committees enough. It's unfortunately, we, we just don't. I mean, because we just don't have the time ourselves, and staff doesn't have the time. So, I do want it made clear that I am definitely not anti-youth. I, I've spent my, I've devoted forty years of my life to young people in this community, and I will continue to do so.
Okay. So, logistically, we have to figure it out. Well, that's what I'm saying. Logistically, we have to, do you want to, do you want to table this to committee of the whole? So, we can figure out how it could work?
No, we're, I don't want to table it.
Because we have to figure out which committees, too. Yeah, refer it to the committee. Okay, do we have to have a seconder? Okay? Go. Moved and seconded, go ahead, were you going to say something?
Thank you. Just before we call, just before we call the vote, I just wanted to share that there are other, I was going to suggest that we're going to be reviewing this bylaw, the, what is it, the?
Citizen Advisory.
Citizen Advisory Committee bylaws. Anyway, that's, that's on the agenda as well. We can look at the wording, sample wording of other, other committees and, and what's offered to youth. Some, in, in other municipalities, there are some seats available to youth from up to a certain age. They do not have any voting rights on some, on some boards and some committees. They're just, there are only seats made available for them. So, there are a lot of variables out there that we can take a look at, so yes, I'm in favor of tabling.
Good. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Special meeting focused on youth. The council hold a special meeting to hear youth issues whereby youth and youth organizations will be invited to make presentations, and where next steps towards the process of creating a startup committee that will subsequently work towards creating a youth advisory council will be discussed. So, what happens is, we just have a, a special meeting, youth individuals, youth groups, youth organizations can come in, they can, they can speak, and basically, it works towards a startup committee that will then pull together a youth advisory, or youth advisory council.
Second.
Then seconded, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. Now, when you say a council, hold a special meeting, the word council, is that all of council, or is it a committee of the whole council, where people come and give presentations and what have you?
Yeah, special council meeting, like all, all of us. It would just be a special meeting.
So, you're asking council to hold, all of us come to a special meeting that you want to organize? Is that what you're asking? That's what you're asking?
Well, staff is going to organize it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. That staff be directed to bring back information to council on a variety of youth advisory councils, their setups, policies, and other information, so that council will be versed on the topic before the special meeting with youth, and so the information will be readily available for youth purposes. Just so that we're not trying to figure out what we're dealing with, what we like, how we want it to look, that type of thing, just to get information to us.
Thank you, your worship. Before I make, before, I'll make that motion. I'm going to ask the CIO to, to share his thoughts with us. He's looking very pensive. Do you have anything to add to that? Are you thinking about anything? Oh, okay then, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We'll make that motion.
Okay, so we got a motion. Have I got a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Legacy Project 2017. That a committee be set up immediately with regards to discussing a legacy project to celebrate Canada two seven, 2017, that our municipal partners and citizens be engaged in the process. So, out of, out of a meeting that I had last week with the Federal Minister of Heritage, there's, there are funds out there for 2017, but they won't last forever, because it's all of Canada. There's, there's a specified amount, a certain amount of funding, and if we get in as quickly as we can, and do this with our partners, of course, then we have a better opportunity to get some of the funding that would, that would help us celebrate the 2017. Now, I put legacy project, I don't know if I, if I should have, but my thinking was that we can spend a whole pile of money on little things that go away, or we can do something big. And the something big lasts forever, that they talk about in another hundred and fifty years. So, that was, that was just my thinking, but it has to be, you know, something big, something that's meaningful to the town. So, that's the motion. Did somebody make that motion for me? Or make that motion?
So.
Moved and seconded. Okay, so we've got Counselor Landell.
Thank you, your worship. I saw this, there's a couple of issues here. I've been waiting for this to pop up, and I'm delighted that you attended the meeting with the Federal Minister. We have, we did have for the two-fiftieth, a structure in place with the three municipal units. Many of those people are still away, are still around, and what we did for the two-fiftieth was to work with our partners, and out of that came a legacy project, which is the Seaman, Sea Memorial, which is down on Water Street, was a direct result of that partnership we have with our units. The concern that I would have here is a legacy project. That is, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a handle on the motion, because the way the motion is, is worded, we're going to be focusing only on a legacy project. I also understand, and I, and that's my question, where you were meeting with the minister, I was off the impression that the federal government was also having funds available for festivals, events, and other activities in the community.
Absolutely.
So, this motion is, and just one clarification, is focusing only on a legacy project. We're not, we're, it'll be a separate group that will, because what happened, and Jim will remember, with the legacy project with Lost of the Sea Memorial, the two-fiftieth ended up doing a lot of the fun, getting a lot of the funds and get the project going, but it was actually the Waterfront Development Corporation that, that, that carried it through. And with the two-fiftieth, what we did is, we had a, a And with the 250th, what we did is, we had a huge committee, but we worked with all of the volunteer organizations to have a commonality of the theme during 2017. And by doing it that way, all of those different agencies were able to independently apply for funding, and were very successful. And in the end, and the CIO can correct me if I'm wrong, but we got close to $400,000 and $500,000 in extra funding that did roll in that year, not only from the government that we got luckily, but also, groups and agencies were also able to access through independent funds. So what I'd like to suggest, your worship, is yes, by all means, I'm fully supporting this motion. I think that's great. But I think we need a second motion. And the second motion should be to start the process, to get groups together for, to start planning for 2017, and maybe look at that model we used for 250th, and get some of those same partners on board as we did before, to look at the events in 2017 as well. Because I think we've got two different things, two dynamics happening here. Because the legacy project is like a legacy project, as you stated. So I definitely would support this, but afterwards, I'd like to make a second motion, your worship, with your mission.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. When I read this, I had to smile. I was wondering, maybe you've been, you've been listening in on my conversations, or piping in on my emails, because I just recently, I just recently was, was in correspondence with Ottawa on this. And I am going to pull up the email, because there are three succinct, different categories within that. If you're going to make the, if councillor Langel is going to make the motion, then fine, I will second it. Unless we want to do a little more homework and specify if we want to table this until the committee of the whole, I'm easy either way. Because I have also gotten information in the meantime, parallel to you sitting down, unknowingly.
Let me ask this, because we need, the first thing, because I did speak with the wardens, but can we change it to, with regards to discussing projects related to celebrating Canada 2017, and then separate them when we get there?
Well, why don't we just table this until the committee of the whole, and then get her going? Because I have a lot of information on that. I have the email.
Okay, we can do that, because there is a lot of information out there. You gather that out and bring it?
Will I, pardon me?
You're going to gather it out and bring it?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Yes, I will. Yeah. We'll let my colleague, my colleague speak before I would make a motion to table it. Next committee of the whole.
Go ahead, deputy.
With respect to the conversation around the table, a couple of questions, your worship. Other, the other two units are interested and are preparing similar motions or similar discussions at their council meetings. And Ken, the word legacy, I don't perceive that as a problem at all. You know, certainly, the Fisherman's Memorial was a wonderful project arising, originating with the 250th Committee. But I don't see that as being restrictive. I don't think of that word as being restrictive. Once we get the committees together, or the people organizing and working on the committees, then I believe that it'll all come. So I would be prepared to vote in favor of this motion. I don't think we need a second motion, Ken, do we?
Okay.
I think we do, because this, when you're planning events like 2017, you want to get as many people involved as we possibly can, and you want everybody involved, and you want to make it one heck of a party like what we did in the 250th. My concern is, is if you get a limited committee of three or four people together, maybe the opportunity may not be there for some of the groups to get. Because we never really, we had a formal structure in the 250th. We had a planning committee that was made up of equal representation of the town, the county, and Argyle. That was our executive committee. But the actual people in that, I visualize, is what you would have for your legacy project. That would be basically your steering committee. But the real people who rolled up the sleeves and got dirty and did the real work, never even sat around the table with the executive committee. That group of 45, 50 volunteers, you know, met downstairs here in these chambers on a monthly basis and planned the events for the year and did the work. So you had like a double stream. And I just don't want to see us alienate any of the groups, or make people feel they're not part of the whole thing. So that's why, but I also hear the mayor, because we have to pitter-patter get at it for some of these funding grants. Now, other grants, like councillor Dawes suggested, aren't really that time significant, but I would suggest to you, your worship, you're quite right. The legacy money is, there is some timelines there that are fairly tight. And I would highly recommend we just pass this part of the motion tonight and get at it, because if we delay it for a couple of weeks, then that's two weeks lost. Because I'm assuming there may be agendas or ideas in mind now to get moving on this. I'd hate to see delay.
So, so here's my thinking. We passed this one, but we also passed the second one. Because there is money, and it's going to go fast for the festivals and stuff like that. I guess my thinking was that if we are going to get only one pot of money, then I, just my thinking is that, boy, you want to do the legacy project, because they don't, it doesn't come along that often. So I'm in favor of this motion, and then the second motion, and then we get at it. Are you good? Did you?
I know I'm, I know I'm on my third, third out of only two allowed, but deadline dates to submit a look festivity, festivals application, we passed January 31st, the next one is April 30th, and then September 30th. There is no fixed deadline for legacy fund applications. Community anniversaries, we missed that one. That was January 31st as well. And if we can, no, you're shaking your head there, councillor.
Are you reading the Canada Heritage applications? Is that what you're reading, councillor? Because those are annual, those are annual deadlines. Those are annual deadlines. So it's irrelevant for 2017? There is another?
There is another one for 2017.
The 2017 is the, is the one I think that her worship is referring to specifically? Because the Canada Heritage ones are every year, and CFest, and many of the groups apply to that every year. But the 2017 one, I think, your worship, you have probably those deadlines more so. And the legacy aspect, I believe, and I can be corrected by yourself, your worship, is a little tighter timeline, and that, and I think we have to move on that within the next three or four months.
I can't correct you, because I don't have the date. I just know that it was, get in now, because everybody in Canada is going to be after this.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. That was a different, those are different websites?
Okay, there's no more discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that the town of Yarmouth engage in conversation with our municipal partners, the municipality district of Yarmouth, and the municipality of the district of Argyle, to form a joint committee with plans to make a countywide celebration for 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Swing for children with disabilities. That staff, I think we're all familiar with this one, though. I think it's all come to our doors. That staff be directed to look into the logistics and costs of having one or more swings for children with disabilities placed in the town playground or playgrounds. And I just had a brief conversation with Frank, and, you know, he was saying the Yarmouth South might be the best just because of the opening and things like that. But that would all have to be worked out. So we're just looking for information right now. Moved and seconded? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Yep, go ahead.
Just on that one, could we do that maybe in a timely fashion, so that we could have it in consideration for budget for this year, please?
Thank you. Okay, so the update on housing was the next issue, and you know what? I just, housing is in the forefront, I think, of everybody's minds, but we need to have a bigger discussion about it. I don't think, I don't think sitting here tonight will solve anything. But I just wanted to mention that I've been in conversation, and councillor Dawes actually said in on the meetings with, with a lot of the stakeholders in the town on this same issue. Caroline, our planner, was there as well, and we're taking some strides in the town. The UNSM is going to carry this issue, I want to say at their fall or spring workshop, but I did, I did check with the board to make sure that was on there. And I'm also, I've also asked it to be added to the Atlantic Mayor's Congress, which then, when that gets carried over, it goes to FCM. So it's a matter of that federal housing policy, and I just wanted you to know that it really is on the radar, but we're going to have to sit down and, you know, make sure we're good with everything. So there was, there was nothing else there. Council Advisory Committees. Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
I move that the building official be directed to move forward with issuing written notice to the property owner of 1 Forbes Street to remedy the conditions.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that $12,800 be approved for the 2015 Saltscapes Expo to be held April 24th, 5th, and 6th, 2015, at Exhibition Park in Halifax.
So moved, seconded, discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the process as recommended by the Economic Development Officer regarding the future direction of the Yarmouth Consolidated Memorial High School be accepted.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to allocate $385,000 for grants to organizations for the 2015-16 fiscal year.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the allocation of grants to organizations be, for 2015-16 be approved.
Okay, wait a second. The staff be directed to allocate $385,000 for 2015-16, but we just approved 2015-16. Is this the right date? Go ahead.
Your worship, your worship, the first, the first motion deals with the fact that you have to allocate the funds out of next year's budget in the fiscal year prior, when you're giving grant money. And the second motion deals with the specific allocations that you as councillors decided in your, in your grants to organizations process.
That's as I understand it.
Gotcha. Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the lease with the Yarmouth County Historical Society Foundation for Parade Street property be accepted.
So moved. Seconded. Any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. That's better.
I move that the correspondence from the Nova Scotia International Leadership Camp for support for Catherine Lewis be received and placed on file.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the final report on the Yarmouth brand mark be accepted as outlined.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, deputy. Everybody's alive tonight.
I move that correspondence be sent to the Department of Natural Resources in support of the status quo on hunting regulations in Nova Scotia, which is no hunting on Sunday.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the town of Yarmouth support the Community Housing Options Initiative through Collaboration and Engagement Project on the proviso that we receive a copy of the study and other studies organizations would like to share with us for our own research purposes.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Welcome back! Opposed? Motion carried.
Makes it less boring, by the way. I move that correspondence from the Woodland Conference 2015 be replaced, be received and placed on file.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that council send a letter of support for the YREACH program.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I can't remember what that stands for. Anyway, I move that the town of Yarmouth support the Escape Across the Gulf proposal in principle, and encourage Bruce McNab to proceed with the understanding that the town is not in a position to provide funding at this time, but a letter of support for the project be, will be provided.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Citizen Advisory Committees, Planning Advisory, Deputy Mayor.
So, as I understand it, I'm making a motion to amend the, what was presented. So there are four items. Caroline King, our planner, is here, if we require further discussion. Number one, I move to amend an existing development agreement at 47 Hayley Road to reduce the number of group dwellings in future development lot space A, and permit the construction of an additional office space accessory to the residential units as outlined in Option One of Caroline King's report.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move to amend the land use bylaw to rezone 15-17 Alma Street from low-density residential R1 to downtown commercial C1 as outlined in the planner's report.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
You see around us in the room, all the colorful designations, and making planning more interesting and fun. I move to amend the land use bylaw to rezone 31 Stars Road from medium-density residential R2 to general commercial C2 as outlined in Caroline King's report.
Moved and doubly seconded. Do we hear a third? Do we hear? Oh, my goodness, thank you, Jeff. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
The last recommendation from PAC is I move to amend the land use bylaw to provide a clear definition of kennel as outlined in Option One of the planner's report.
All together? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you.
I'm choking. Thank you, deputy. Communities in Bloom Advisory, councillor Langel?
Your worship, before I do this, I, just an observation, this meeting is going extremely well since councillor Mooney's not here, so maybe there's something, there's something happened. Something in the water, it must be. Your worship, council referred a request from an individual who wanted to solicit or give his services for a fee, of course, to do a painting on the street, on Hawthorne Street to Communities in Bloom. The committee did meet, and the motion is that we're recommending that council reject the Hawthorne Street painting proposal, but suggest the painting on a building or on a rock wall along the Maud Lewis Trail between Stars Road and Parade Street.
Aye, second that. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Let me give that to Ken. Excuse me. Reports for information we've got here. I've got a mayor's report. I haven't had one for a while, but it's pretty short. Mayor's Report, March 2015. Well, it's been a while since we've seen a winter like this. And first things first, I think all the council will agree, a huge thank you is extended to our Public Works Department for countless hours of plowing and moving too many tons of snow. Thank you also goes out to those citizens who stepped up to uncover the fire hydrants. Chief Barrow and crew are thankful and impressed, and the chief's here. Were you impressed, chief? Yes, I know you said, he told me that, because it's a tremendous help to you to have those uncovered. That's what community is about. We're all very aware of the conditions of our streets. Unfortunately, cold mix will not stay in the holes, and with low temperatures and wet conditions, it makes it worse. Some signage is up, but there is not enough to keep up with the demand, so we're asking everyone to drive with extra care. Contrary to what you may have heard read damage to vehicles, vehicle owners should contact their own insurance providers as the province now has a direct compensation property damage insurance plan for all vehicles. It's basically a no-fault program whereby owners collect from their own insurance policy for vehicle damage. We are also asking that care be taken on sidewalks as the frost heave has created some difficult sections. Our crews will be hard at work with street and sidewalk repairs as soon as the weather permits. The work at intersections, narrow roadways, parking stalls, flooding, and more is ongoing. But I received a report today, they said it's about 80% complete. So that's great news, and they've been really, really been at it. The weather may have hit us, but it didn't slow us down. Public Works is also working on the areas of the Jarvis Road and Southeast Street with regard to ditch clearing, building of an overflow ditch. They also repaired four water main breaks and are working on three other service main leaks. The traffic light repair at Stars and Pleasant will begin this week. Although we hope the repairs will be made, this is just from my perspective, just about everyone that's spoken to me would agree that the flow of traffic through that intersection with the four-way stop has never been better. It's the fastest it's ever worked, so please be careful what you wish for, because you can whiz right through there now, but they are on that. And remembering that it's underground problems. Our fire department's been busy, too. Auxiliary recruitment starts this month, and they're looking for 20 to 30 members. Now, that's a hint for everybody. If you're interested, give them a call. They're working hard at planning for the Family Fun Day, that's always a success. The training tower is complete and can now be used, and the new training building will soon have windows and doors installed. And I have it on good authority that council will be invited to participate in some of the training this summer, and it includes smoke and gas. Easy on us, chief. Yeah, I haven't. I'm excited to do that. Our budget process starts next Tuesday, and council will meet each week until we have a solid budget plan in place. The process includes hearing from directors and managers on priorities, a focus on council priorities, and then working through the numbers. Having great municipal partners, funding on amortization, and other initiatives allow us to do more. And while we know everyone is belt tightening mode, council will be armed with the best information to make the best decisions. With regard to economic development and planning, we're seeing many positives. This year alone compared to last, the town saw nearly 850,000 in additional development. That's a great first step with more on the way. Experts were hired to work with the planning department on the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw reviews. We're strategizing to come up with the best methods to deal with buildings in disrepair so that our residents are not living in substandard housing. And there are lots of forward-thinking ideas that will be put into policies and bylaws that will improve the quality of life for Yarmouth residents and support new development. The Town of Yarmouth has a new visual identity logo and tagline on the edge of everywhere. It's a milestone achievement and will serve us well as we go forward. Our website, Facebook, town collateral, promotional material, signage, and more will be looked at to ensure consistency and to ensure it's inviting for all audiences and easy to read. We're very excited with our recent publication in Progress Magazine's Book of Lists, and an upcoming edition of Progress Magazine focused on innovation will feature Yarmouth in an eight-page editorial. The town's asset inventory mapping and community profile are complete, and we'll be working on our investment attraction strategy and toolkit so we can bring more businesses in. There's a whole world to tap into, and that process has begun. Developers are being engaged. There is expanded engagement in business retention and expansion activities to ensure economic development opportunities are identified and coordinated to achieve the best results for our town and our area. We're continuing the process on the high school, and expression of interest has been sent out with regard to the Killam Building. We continue to meet with partners to see where we can further share services. The team is still hard at work on the transit piece, and that will be up and running in the fall. The airport continues to see over a thousand flights per year, and in the midst of all that, the airport team is working on their strategic plan. Every single councillor at this table sits on numerous committees, all doing work to move this community forward. On top of this, we have a ship returning on the 1st of June, visitors from the US and beyond, a facade program that will welcome residents and visitors alike, and much more. There's much to be thankful for, but as always, there's much more work to do, and doing it together is how we get there faster. And then I say now, bring on spring, because we could surely need it. So that's the mayor's report, short and sweet. Questions for committee chairs? I was just gonna ask you, Councilor Dawes, if you wanted to update us on the Sustainable Conference, or if you want to do that at the committee, the whole?
I will. I will. It's going to take a couple of minutes, though, and I promise I'll stay within two minutes.
Okay, two minutes, I'm timing you.
No, not yet, not yet. Don't start.
Approval of invoices, you find it now?
I got it, I got it. But no, go ahead and prove it.
I just have to be in the city by midnight.
Am I on?
Yeah. Okay, are you gonna, go ahead?
Yes, you can time me. Start now. One of the best conferences that I've ever attended since I've been on council was the Sustainable Communities Conference last month in London. There, we covered information that was helpful, cost-saving idea sharing from, and this is only part of the list. Bringing brownfields underutilized sites back to life, the Green Municipal Fund, the Resilient House Standard, youth opportunities was big, the economic and environmental gains of food waste disposers, and I could spend 20 minutes just on that. The Insurance Bureau of Canada on climate change flooding and what to do after disaster strikes, how communities are confronting climate changes specific to their areas, street servicing materials, which was very interesting, backflow valves and their benefits, factoring extreme weather into the design of new and to be refurbished infrastructure, affordable housing, national and provincial residential building codes and how they need to be reviewed and updated to reflect evolving extreme weather impact. Two, and everyone's gonna love this one, municipalities tackling pothole season.
Go on.
There was, yes, there was a special one on there. Municipalities were represented literally, literally, truly, right across the country from Yellowknife to Yarmouth. Everyone shared the challenges that they're dealing with, what has and hasn't been successful while working on those, looking for their solutions. And one thing that came over, it became clear over and over again over the days was, while I was speaking with and listening to colleagues across Canada, I learnt the value of creating environmental and sustainable advisory committees by policy in function with and under planning as a resource to staff and to advise council on policy, programs, and service delivery in the area of environmental stewardship and its links to economic well-being. And I will speak further to this at the next committee of the whole meeting. I picked up a couple. How am I doing on time?
Got here at two minutes.
Ah, I picked up a couple of these dye test strips. Now, this is new to me, possibly not new to our experienced councillors. These are-
We're all experienced now. We're all experienced. They're seasoned.
Thank you. Seasoned. Our seasoned colleagues. These here, these little strips, they're environmentally friendly and Environment Canada approved, and they can identify a toilet that has a slow leak or not.
We have those.
Do we have these?
We do. We've used those.
We do have them?
I'm O'Shore, because mine was leaking one time, and Russell said, "I know what you need."
Ah.
Or Janet, Russell or Janet.
That's wonderful. Then I'll ask the CA, do we have these in vast numbers? Is this something that we could consider putting in with our water bill?
It's probably a scratch.
Be nice. They voted for you. Be nice. I learnt that one leaky toilet can waste up to 200,000 tons of water in a year.
Yep.
That's a big swimming pool. And if one little valve replacement can save a homeowner up to $250 in a year. You're still looking kind of quizzically. I'm sorry? Now, I was thinking, when I was writing down this data and information, I was thinking, man, only four toilet repairs in an entire town. That would cover my cost of attending that conference alone. That's quite a return. And I think I possibly just walked into something there, but if for the rest of my term, every time someone flushes a toilet and thinks of me, well, then so be it. Now, as one last closing item, I'll leave this for you.
Go ahead.
I did, everyone will see, oh, a pen in front of them?
Oh.
Yes, Sandy's already planted her tree. This is after you're done with your pen, then you take your refill out. That is the only non-recyclable. Everything else is recyclable. Now, the very, very bottom, careful when you open, take out the bottom tip.
Yep.
The bottom tip there, you can either plant the entire green tip into the soil, this is also biodegradable, or you can empty it, and you will find three little seeds for white pine trees. There you go. And I specifically put one on Solicitor Barrow's desk because that is to help you landscape your Maud Lewis house.
That's really neat.
I'm sorry, I'm over my three minutes. I'm not gonna say anything-
You weren't being timed.
Anymore.
You weren't being timed, but I thought they were those little nuts, so I ate them. My mother would say, "You're gonna have a pine tree growing in your town." Go ahead, council.
I just wanted to add to Councilor Dawes' bit of trivia where she was throwing things out. I probably didn't know this, but 37% of the water used by a town is used for flushing toilets. That's 37%, actually, we use for flushing our toilets, which is really a phenomenal number. The RBC, Royal Bank, at my conference last week on Canada Water Network, their latest study is coming out, it'll be released on March 25th, I'm looking forward to it, was a lot of municipal water supplies, and they hit the little clanger, which is quite amazing. The other thing that was quite interesting, too, we're having, there's some huge issues. I hope we're not, we're luckily, we, on our sewage treatment plant, as mentioned to CAO earlier tonight, we outflow a lot of our fluid from our sewage treatment plant. However, many sewage treatment plants in Canada, they've just discovered are letting groundwater go, and unfortunately, your worship, there is a chemical that's not treated by many sewage treatment plants called EE2. And EE2 is actually a result of women's birth control pills. And what happens is it goes through the sewage, it's not treated, and the study was released at the conference that they have detected that what it does, once it gets into lake water, it actually makes the male fish female, and they're no longer able to reproduce. In fact, they opened male fish to discover little eggs forming inside the fish. And in some lakes, by introducing it, they've actually eliminated entire species of fish because of this EE2 compound. So there's been a lot of concern now among water utility to say, are we treating this? And where is it going? So it's kind of a neat phenomenon, so I want to pass a little bit of trivia.
Okay, so we have, we have two additions. We have, okay, we approve the invoices, but we also have two additions, 11A, thank you. Whatever thank you is, but you're welcome.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't part of my two minutes.
It was.
No. You owe me. Just quick, thank you to our CAO. This is something that, again, it hit home. The last time he opened his door to me, he's taking time to answer questions and to explain and re-explain sometimes. It just brought back home to me just how much time you actually save everyone with your open-door policy. You save time here, around the table, you save Linda's time, you save our viewers' time, and our viewers benefit from actually a more streamlined, streamlined, I can say this, council meeting when they don't have to sometimes, only on occasion, sit there and scratch their heads and wait until the end of a discussion. So thank you very much.
Yeah, good job. Okay, B 68 Parade, CAO.
Okay, your worship, this is a request for decision, and it was generated by our building inspector as a result of a complaint from an apartment at 63 Parade Street. It's a four-unit building. And this has come to you late, but I'm asking you to, and obviously you've agreed to consider it this evening, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure the resident appreciates that, given the amount of communication she's had with Town Hall and the, I guess, the passion in which she has been expressing her concerns about her living conditions. So let me read through the recommendation, and if you have any questions, I may be able to help. I appreciate that you haven't had a full chance to read through this. And did I say 68?
63.
Oh, sorry, 68, 68 Parade Street.
It's up there.
Yes, of course.
I want someone to stand.
Yeah. So it is recommended that council approve the building official to move forward with issuing written notice to the property owner at 68 Parade Street to remedy the following. One, to maintain the steps and walkways to afford safe passage under normal circumstances. Two, to repair or replace the front door, repair the floor covering to protect the subfloor from moisture, entrance floor, and so that it is level. Repair and paint walls and ceilings. Identify and remedy areas reported as cold in the inspection report and remedy the situation. Replace or have checked the ventilation system in the bathroom to ensure it is properly sized for the room in order to manage the bathroom environment. Bathroom walls require repair. Extermination measures shall be taken until such time as the rat problem is resolved. And have a licensed plumber check the sanitary sewer line and vents to ensure the plumbing is functioning properly, and there is no leaching into the crawl space. Upon inspection of subject property, the building official passed the information associated with one item to the fire inspector for follow-up under the Fire Safety Act. And so she is looking for, under our minimum housing standards by law, council's agreement to issue the order as outlined.
Moved and seconded. Did you have a question?
No, I was going to make the motion. Yes, if we could issue that as soon as possible, that needs to be dealt with immediately. Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, we did the additions, we approved the invoices. The date of next meeting, we wanted to change it to, if we can push it back to the 16th of April. Anybody not okay with that? It's just a week, a week later. Just Councilor Landrell's gonna check his. Good, I hope you're mowing your grass that day, too. I'll be filming. What's that? We're not gonna be here. We're both, we're gone. Okay, so we're good with that change? All right. Nothing else in camera? No, and a motion to adjourn? Good. Thanks, everyone. We need this turned off.